All right, I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Next order of business, Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments?
Yes, I do. My first comment is, thank you Donna DePrenzio for the coffee. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. At our last meeting, I reported news many have been dreading, the long anticipated detour of Route 322 Manor Avenue has been announced by PennDOT. Surprise! PennDOT's already changed the date work will begin. It's now Monday, June 19th. The road will be fully closed 24/7 until the work is completed. Project expected to take up to two weeks. Yes, it will be an inconvenience for us all, but it's got to be done. And with schools out for the summer, the timing couldn't be better. Hopefully, drivers will follow the suggested detour route and not take side streets like Hopewell Road and Edges Mill Road. A detailed map of the detour can be found at count township.org. Manor Avenue may be temporarily closing, but more road bridges open. The final work on the roadway was completed this week, and it looks beautiful. Wow. Memorial Day is already upon us. It's a time for barbecues with family and friends, parades, blowout sales, and the unofficial beginning of the summer season. But the real meaning of Memorial Day is to honor Americans who made the ultimate sacrifice to preserve our fragile democracy. What originated as Decoration Day in the years following the Civil War became an official federal holiday in 1971. Did you know that local boy Penrose Davis II was killed in Action Aguado Canal? Who was he, you might ask? Well, come to the town tour and village walk at Spackman Davis Farm on July 21st, July 21st, and find out. Speaking of Spackman Davis Farm, in just a few minutes from now, the Historical Commission will be presenting our storyboard for what promises to be a memorable town tour. We all enjoy a good fireworks display, but many of our neighbors who made it back from war zones are especially bothered by the sound of explosions. Let us not forget how traumatic the noise is for our pets. We can honor our veterans and protect our furry friends by limiting the power and duration of the fireworks we set off this weekend and by following the Township guidelines. Salsa, time is coming. Jimmy Jorge and the Latin Express headlined the next summer concert series event at Municipal Park on Friday, June 2nd. I believe Chris Parr is all salsaed up and ready to go. If you've never attended an outdoor summer dance, you don't want to miss this one. We used to have them in Lincoln Park, like, all month of July. It's a great way to lose weight. Go out there and dance on summer nights. I think I'm gonna have to do it. Parks and Rec have worked hard to put together a great night of fun, like they always do. Philly Hot's Food Truck serving up creative sandwiches, East Coast Mini Donuts bringing dessert. The fun kicks off at 6:30. Come early and maybe you can pick up a couple of salsa steps early. I read a very interesting post on social media this week that I'd like to share. "I don't know if this is what every township requires, but if a development gets the okay, then they should be required to plant at least one tree for every one they remove. Since it takes many years for trees to mature to sequester much CO2 and other pollutants, then maybe two trees for every mature tree removed is the best way to go. This isn't about screwing over developers, but it might just save some mature wooded sites from being developed, and the effect of having more carbon capturing mature trees benefits us all." I don't often find things on social media that I find great. That one I did. Spread kindness, everyone. What's that?
It's a nice idea. It truly is.
Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentment are not worth our time. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go around and the greatest gifts any of us can give or receive.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, next, we do have citizens to be heard. We'll reach out to the Township Building here at this time. Anything for agenda items? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Any in Zoom world? And at this time, we can move on to the presentation. First, we have Scott Rizman for the Bonsville Road Apartments. Yeah, just speaking to the mic. Is the mic on, just to make sure?
Yeah, does the board, I sent an email to the board, and I apologize it was not sent until this afternoon, but if you want me to set the stage a little bit about historical development, I can do that first, and then let Mr. Rizman speak.
It was a lot to read, and what time we get it, about 3:00?
Yeah, no, no, I didn't expect you to read the decisions. I just expected you to understand the email part, so let me do that. It might help, Scott. So this started in 2011. Mr. Rizman has a company called Bonsville Realty. Let me read the name, because I always get it messed up. Bonsville Road Realty Ventures. It's the property at 415 Bonsville Road. It's actually two different tax parcel numbers, next to the Turkey Hill. Okay, and it's zoned R4, okay? And in 2011, Mr. Rizman came to the board at the time and asked them to amend the zoning ordinance to allow a use that really hadn't been defined in the ordinance, which is called a senior independent living facility. At the time, the board did agree to change the zoning ordinance. It required a conditional use approval for that use to be approved in the R4 district. Mr. Rizman went through a series of conditional use hearings and received the Board of Commissioners' conditional use approval in a decision that was dated December of 2013. That was one of the things that I attached to the email. Because part of the property is in the floodplain and part of the development would disturb riparian buffer, the applicant also needed to get relief in the form of special exception from the zoning hearing board. So there was a decision in 2016 from the zoning hearing board that allowed disturbance of floodplain for various stormwater management, road crossings, et cetera, as well as disturbance of riparian buffers. Then came land development approval. So in September of 2017, the Board of Commissioners granted preliminary plan approval for a 15,397 square foot building, four stories, 57 independent dwelling units. That has, you know, along with all the zoning approval conditions, the preliminary plan has its own set of conditions. The board then granted final plan approval in a decision of June 14, 2018, and again, you know, sort of recited the normal conditions. There are some specific to this project, because stormwater drainage is going to go out the back end of the property and go on to Township Open Space Land. So there are various legal agreements that were negotiated and actually attached to the motion to final plan approval. Under the state law, which is called the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, when a developer receives preliminary plan approval, they have five years to substantially complete the development. If they don't complete the development in that five-year window, it doesn't mean that the plan terminates. It doesn't mean the plan blows up and goes away. What it means is that a developer would be required to analyze what ordinances were adopted since the date of preliminary plan approval and see if any of those ordinances affect the ability of that plan to go forward. With respect to the zoning ordinance, I am not aware of changes in the zoning. So today, this property is still zoned R4. You are still allowed to have a senior independent living facility by conditional use, and all the zoning approvals would still run with the land and run with this development. The one ordinance that I am aware, and obviously the board is aware, is we were required in 2022 to adopt an updated stormwater management ordinance. I cannot say, because I don't get into the nitty-gritty details of stormwater management design, I don't know how that affects the plan. Mr. Rizman has come back and requested, from a staff perspective, to have a conversation. So Kristin Ray and I, and Mr. Rizman and his lawyer, or I'm sorry, his engineer Vic Kelly from Commonwealth Engineers, we had a Zoom meeting where he indicated that he would like to move forward with this development himself. He would like to take a level off of the building and only do a three-story building, so reduce the unit count, and basically ask the board if you would agree that he can go forward on that plan. So I'll let him talk now, but I just wanted to let you know that there's been a long history. There are development approvals in place. If the board, it's not like you can say, "No, we don't want it," but what you could say is that you want his engineer to analyze what impact the new ordinance has on the plan. It may not change anything. It may require more infiltration. It may require bigger basins. I don't really know what that impact would be. But with that, hopefully you understand the history of this project. And Mr. Young was here for probably all of that, so he's familiar with those decisions. So, anyway. With that, Mr. Rizman?
I have one question. Is it possible for us to see a Google view of that?
Yeah, I did not prepare to bring, I did not bring a map. I apologize.
Want to see exactly where we're doing.
So it's 3.393 acres, east side of Bonsville Road, south of the Route 30 bypass. Again, in the R4 medium-to-high-density residential district.
I also know it is that pile of dirt that sat there for a couple of years. I do appreciate you finally removing that, but I know it took some time.
Yes, sir. I had joint ventures with certain companies, because I'm not an apartment builder. I was working with a couple of different, larger companies in the area that do this full-time, and we're going after some grant money. We had to submit, and then there's a long process that you have to wait before you find out whether or not you get the grant money. We submitted it two times. That happened, and then COVID happened, and I own another business, and I kind of hyper-focused on that business to make sure I can keep my employees and everybody in place. And this particular property took the back burner. We always had intentions of building the building on the property, using the same footprint, using the same plan. I had since met a local developer who specializes in apartments. We had discussed different things, and we think that we can minimize the density, which is something that I would hope the Township would like to hear, which, again, would also minimize traffic, and it would only be a three-story building versus a four-story building, be a safer building as well when it comes to fire prevention and everything along those lines. Mrs. Camp pretty much nailed it, so I don't really have anything else to kind of say on that matter.
Commissioners, questions?
Count, have you looked at what the ordinance changed, whether that would have an effect or not?
The stormwater?
Yes.
I really haven't looked into it that much, simply because we have a lot of the stormwater management already built. We have the basin on the property built in the back of the property, which we did get permission when we did our grading permit. That's that section in the back left corner. I don't think it would really affect it very much.
Yeah, I'm not, again, I'm not the engineer on stormwater management, but just understanding what the county's process was, I don't think it significantly changed design of stormwater facilities. I think there was, like, housekeeping items they were taking care of, and I know with the simplified approach, that was one of the main focuses. This would not be a simplified approach, so I don't think that impacts it. But I think it's a fair question to ask his engineer to analyze, you know, does it change? Or would the township be benefited in any event by any way if you were required to comply with the new ordinance? I think that's a fair question to ask. I know that this project went, you know, the Township engineer, you know, all the Township consultants went over this with a fine-tooth comb. It was not something that was like, "Oh yeah, we're just gonna slap a plan together, and you're gonna get your approval." I mean, as you heard, from 2011 on, there was a very thorough review done by all the Township consultants. And Mr. Rizman and I, I was talking to Allison Zara today. I said that he was generally pretty agreeable to any conditions. I mean, you don't usually get developers that, you know, "Okay, I will do that." Like, I think he accepted a lot of the conditions the Township requested of him, and I know that the prior Township engineer was very, had him do very conservative in terms of some of the conditions, like a conservative approach, given that the property, part of it's in the floodplain, and that there were property owners nearby that were concerned about it. So I think that, you know, I was involved in the process, and I do recall that there were some pretty stringent conditions that were imposed, all of which the applicant agreed to, so.
There's only one enter and exit? I'm sorry.
There is an entrance to the right-hand side where there would be a bridge built, and there is an emergency exit. If you can see the, can I go over and point to it?
Sure, yeah.
Where the entrance would come in, cross over this really small stream there. We have a 20-foot wide bridge. Handle the water from a capability aspect, and I believe this is the emergency access.
I don't know who this question is for. How will the PennDOT widening and exit ramp plans potentially affect this development? Because we're already, the plans that we've seen for the Manor Avenue exit, we're gonna lose homes already. Would you be building something just to have it torn down?
No, we already have our highway occupancy permit. We just have to get a renewal, which we're in the process of doing right now, because, again, that's something that runs concurrent in the same way this does. So we've already did our reapplication for our highway occupancy permit, so we're in good shape. Our civil engineer, Commonwealth Engineering, already looked into all of those items.
The widening process that they're doing on, because they're widening the bypass and redoing all of the ramps. They could come right through.
To my knowledge, we're not affected.
All right. Am I well looking?
Very, very good question, but I know that our engineer is dealing with the folks at the Department of...
Transportation.
Yeah, transportation.
Just a question, Kristin Camp. So the updated ordinance also had, like, inspection requirements that the previous ordinance did not.
Yeah, no, you're right. I mean, the old ordinance always did impose upon the landowner the requirement to inspect the facilities. But yeah, those would be something that we could require, for sure.
They would be all what, O and M agreements with the developer?
Yeah, yep. That's a good point, Josh, yep.
Scott, are you planning to hold on to this, or would this be an HOA-type thing, or what would?
So now that I have the right person in place who I'm gonna partner with, he has multiple apartments of this size. The reason why this process, this project took so long and has been such a long-drawn-up building is because typically, nobody wants to buy or work with anybody unless it's 100 units or more, because then you would have your in-house management company that would handle it. This is a 57-unit building, and it's in that weird kind of spot where it doesn't sustain a in-house management company. So what we would do is we would be sharing it with two of his other properties. He has one in Chad's Ford, and I think one in Chester, not Chester Springs, and King of Prussia. So this would be like a shared management situation. In that case, it works from like a financial aspect.
Okay, so you would be, or a management company would be retaining control of it?
Yeah, these aren't units that are sold off. These are rented units. Is that correct?
Yes. I don't believe I could condo it even if I wanted to.
No, I don't think, the way, the definition of...
I believe the language stated that.
The use itself does not allow the units to be individually sold off. It's like an apartment building that's owned by a one, you know, one entity.
Okay. And with the removal of the fourth floor, how many apartment units will you be down to?
We're not sure yet, because we haven't done the architectural yet, because there's, like, a lot of dominoes that need to fall in the right direction. Need to find out what your water suppression is gonna be before you can design the building. So there's a lot of steps we have to take to figure that out, but we would be in the 40, 45, 48 range is what I'm guessing. So it'd be a substantial amount.
Is there a variety of apartments, you know, studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or are these all standard size?
I don't want to sound vague, but again, I'm not an apartment builder, but I believe that we were thinking a lot of one-bedroom apartments with, like, an office at type thing in them, because that's what the gentleman built in the Chad's Ford area, and that's been a big success. A lot of people working from home. The thought process is, I think the end units would be two-bedroom units, but the majority of the interior units would be one-bedroom.
Any other questions?
Wondering what the person who lives in the house with the swimming pool right in front of it feels. Have you had any communication with them? Not that that...
Well, they were parties, I mean, I think they were parties along the whole way.
They were parties.
They were parties in all the different proceedings.
Do they still live there, though?
Yeah.
It's been how many years?
Yeah, but I mean, the people that lived there were parties.
So would that information need to be resent to the new owners?
No, I mean, it's all public records. If they want to come, they can. Yeah, if they ask for any of the records, we obviously would give it to them and educate them on what's, yeah. And I would encourage Mr. Rizman to reach out and get to know his neighbors and understand and address their concerns.
I stopped and left a note in the mailbox with my business card, asked them if any problems or concerns to give me a call, and I've never received any phone calls.
Yeah, they won't have a problem or concern until they see an apartment complex in their backyard, so, right now, yeah.
They bought the property knowing that.
Okay.
That this was already proved, so.
Hate surprises. Okay. Oh, yes, Mr. Kramer, come on up. Yeah, up to the mic. Welcome.
So I know he was gonna be here tonight.
Yeah, Chuck, you were part of this.
I was part of that, so that's why I wanted to say, I wanted to offer to the board. Josh and I were on the board when all this approval happened. If anybody has any questions on what happened during that time, I'm more than willing to have a discussion, let you know what our reasoning was and why we approved what we did. So that's for you guys. If you need the information...
For years, I thought the apartment complex looked like a pile of dirt, but...
It did, it did. And there's great fishing back there, too, by the way. So, but don't tell Mr. Rizman I went back there and fished on.
Okay. I heard nothing. Come up to the microphone.
931 Bonsville Road.
Welcome, Kathy.
Kathy. Hi, I did meet the people that bought the place, and they did know what was happening. But they're not happy about it. I know that for sure. They're scared, of course. So besides traffic being a crazy nightmare, and I can't imagine that the bypass isn't going to go right there, because I know it's coming on the other side as well, and when people in historic homes look out their back window or front window, are we gonna see some modern building if it's gonna be three stories high? Because it's definitely gonna change the whole, the whole thing in the wintertime. Well, in the summertime, too, to look over at a tall building.
Which property butts up to this?
So...
The historical property?
It doesn't. But when we look out our window, I can look at the Turkey Hill. When I look out of the new home that we bought, I can look at the Turkey Hill in the wintertime. I can't even imagine, and everything's flat. But, so you're gonna have a big building sticking up from, I mean, I don't mean to sound selfish. I just think it's crazy. So obviously, it went from four levels to three. I just can't even, I just can't even imagine. It puts some big, modern building there, and people are coming out of that area, and it's just right at the road, and then you're gonna have a modern, I mean, and I know you guys feel that way over Manor Avenue. You don't want apartments. I don't want to look at an apartment either. Not a high one. I get it. I get you doing an apartment, and I thought it was gonna be older people that maybe wouldn't have a lot of cars, too.
Hey, I'm an older person.
I'm an older person as well, but I'm just saying, we're gonna be driving down the road, and then you're gonna see, now you don't see anything, because it's, you know, you've got the Turkey Hill. Everything's low. You have the veterinary place there, and you have even Thorndale. I mean, but we look out our windows. I don't know if Dawn can look down our windows. But if I'm up on the second floor, I certainly can see Turkey Hill. Anyway, just wanted to be, just, I didn't come here for this tonight. I didn't even know about this tonight, so, sorry.
Thanks, Kathy. Mr. Rizman, I'll say Kathy Callahan's very involved with our Historical Commission, and our Historical Commission has gotten pretty active in the last couple of years. You know how gorgeous Edges Mill is, and... This is nothing, I'm not trying to put anything on you, but when you get to your design phase, would you consider using any design guidelines that might make your building look more appropriate to anyone around, you know, looking, driving, or doing historical tourism? I know that, not Auger, Auger Fabrications Partners, the new building that they're doing on Edges Mill is making their building look like it's from the 19th century, so just put that in your pipe.
Mr. Evans, I live in a very old home over at Apple Cross. I have restored about 15 old homes at this point in time. I'm currently restoring one in Chester Springs.
I need your number.
My office, my office was built in 1733. I own Earth Care. We're half log, half stone house. I can fully appreciate historic homes, and I'm very abundantly aware of design features, so I most certainly will take that into consideration.
Thank you, thank you. Are you the, what we call the log house in Cowan?
I do, no, I'm over in East Brandywine. I live right across the street from the Apple Cross.
Okay. Wonderful. Come to one of our meetings.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I volunteered to do the Bonsville...
Bonsville Mill?
Yeah, with East Brandywine. I did a lot of work with.
Been working with Jim over there? Great guy. We're gonna be doing some things at Spackman Farm you might find interesting, so.
Always happy to help out.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So is the consensus, then, to ask his engineer to examine with the stormwater ordinance how it would impact the plan?
That would be the first thing, yes.
All right.
Are we able to find out how many apartments and the height of this?
Certainly. I don't mean to be...
Big.
Mr. Chairman, but we really, there are so many things we have to do first before we can determine, definitively know exactly how many units. I don't want to say in a public forum, it's gonna be 46 if it's 49, or, you know what I mean? But definitely, the plan is to reduce, to currently reduce what we have there.
Yeah, reducing the height might help out.
And it's gonna help with traffic, so it's gonna help all the way around, so.
Yeah, it's, and for me, I know 340 is very busy, and that would be my only concern, trying to come in and out of that development.
We've done the traffic impact study and back, way back when we got, before we got our conditional final approval, and...
And that was how many years ago?
That was...
Would that need to be updated?
No.
No.
Yeah, no, those approvals best.
Okay. Just covering all bases.
But that was, I mean, that was one of the selling points of it, is that it is an over 55 community. The traffic impact from an older clientele is different, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I thought I saw a hand raised. If you could... Yeah, Scott, don't leave just yet. I know we had a hand raised. Is it still there, just in case? Nope. All right. Thanks, Scott.
I appreciate it.
Yes. Oh, yes. Welcome, Chris.
Hi, Chris Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue. My only question in regards to this apartment building. When you're saying three stories, is there parking underneath and then three stories of apartments above that, or is it ground up? Ground up. Okay, thank you. And actually, Commissioner, on that, a lot of your questions were my questions, so thank you for asking. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not trying to leak. I didn't know.
No, no, yeah. Chris just ran right up there. Did you see that? No, that's fine. Okay, Scott, thank you. We're good.
And have a good night.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. Next on the agenda, what is this thing called? Historical Commission Town Tour Presentation? We have like a hundred and fifty people here at the township. All right, let's get into it.
I all need two things. I need, we need a microphone for Tom Parr, a microphone for Don Coglan. And I need, I need to be able to share my screen. I'm ready? Okay, thank you. And then I got to go through which notes were the right ones. All right. Just got to say, our historical commission is amazing.
Oh, yes.
All right, so let's see what we got here. I'll say a couple things before we start. We're so honored to have been given this tour, and we're out of our minds excited about it. This tour will be called Time Machine. It will be. Our guests will actually travel through time from seventeen sixty-two to the present. They'll meet the actual people who built Spackman Davis Farm into the jewel it would become. Yes, portrayed by actors. We're not conjuring any ghosts that I know of, although there is one known to roam the halls of Spackman Manor. Thank you to the township for allowing us to use the farm for this. Thank you to the township for allowing us to use the hill across the street from, across King's Highway for parking. Thank you to Public Works for fixing the rain gutter and filling the holes. Thank you to the anonymous Old County Historical Society donor who paid for us to hire a trolley for that day. We look forward to thanking the fire police should they be able to help us out with something we'll ask them for later. We look forward to thanking Ingleside for something we'll ask them for a little later. And we thank in advance anyone who will consider lending the steering committee a set of keys so that we can walk through it on June third and make sure that we know what we have to fix and not fix. Historical tourism is a thing. A year ago, the historical commissioners are talking about the importance of historical tourism and the opportunity we have to capitalize on that market right here in Callan Township. We set out to get Callan Township's rich history into the public eye. Last summer, we began exploring the idea of trying to host an opening event at Spackman Davis Farm. Less than ninety days later, with the help of Parks and Rec, Public Works, NOCHS, forty-five guests, including historic preservations from across the county, joined us on a freezing cold windy November day to cut the ribbon, and there were donuts involved, as I recall. Where were those donuts from? Two months after that, we were asked to host this tour that we're going to present to you tonight. There's only ten that the county sponsors every summer. These tours generally attract two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty guests. If those people come and they come hungry, they might spend some of their money at some of our establishments. In fact, I think one of our establishments is actually on the tour. And now, the Chester County Historical Preservation Network has chosen Town Township Historical Commission as the recipient of their twenty twenty-three municipality award for our work to bring Spackman Davis Farm back from the dead and into the public eye. Thank these people. They're outrageous, and from there, we're going to go into the time machine. Whoever wants to.
I'll start with this. Good evening, commissioners. On behalf of Don Coglan, I'm Tom Parr, the rest of our members behind us, and Paul Stevens, our president. I'd like to present our tour, our tour of the Spackman Davis Farm. It'll be Thursday, July twentieth, from five thirty to seven. Okay, welcome. Visitors will arrive and park across King's Highway from Spackman Davis Farm, register, and forms group of, form groups of twenty-four. The first group is greeted in seventeen sixty-two by Jane Edge Park, widow of farm founder Jacob Park. He shares the top line history of his land.
The first group is welcomed to seventeen sixty-two by Jane Park, the Edge, who tells us that in seventeen sixty-two, she purchased this land from Joseph Pike, the original holder of the seventeen oh-three Penn Grant. She and Thomas ran the original ship in, now the Orangery Restaurant off Lloyd Avenue, until his death. And before she remarried to James Webb, she did something unheard of at that time. She had a prenup, drawn up, that left the land in her name only. This was a forward-thinking and independent act to ensure an inheritance for her children. She lets us know that throughout time, the story of this land is one of resilient women, determined to hold on to it and to protect it. She shares that her son Jacob received the land as part of her last will and testament. She believes Jacob may have begun developing the land as a farm and may have built a portion of the house, but can't be certain. Jacob sold the property to Isaac Spackman in seventeen eighty-five, and she encourages us to look out across all of this beauty, that this is all part of Callan Township and Chester County's earliest agrarian heritage. Just out of sight, further down the road, along Beaver Creek, we find examples of the earliest industrial development in Callan. Among them, the mill her Edge family established. She thinks, she says, that this fertile land is the birthplace of Chester County, here in the heart of Chester County. The group now boards the trolley for travel down to the farm, and stop one is the bank barn.
We arrive in eighteen oh-four at the southeast corner, the base of the barn, and meet Isaac Spackman. Through an open barn door, we see a horse grazing in the paddock and can hear chickens squawking in the distance. Isaac tells us that he and his wife Susanna were living in West Bradford at the time of the revolution, and after a nasty run-in with Hessian troops, decided they'd be better off here in Call, where they weren't, they weren't as isolated from their neighbors. He's proud of the barn, large even by twenty-first century standards he had just built. Walks us north to the date stone. From here, he tells us about his home and the confusion over its seventeen seventy-six date stone. He clarifies that the original structure was built in sixteen, seventeen sixty-seven, before he owned the land, as a log, a log one and a half story home, but he upgraded it with larger, with a larger stone structure. He says that due to his growing family, they have eight children, he'll expand the house further with a western addition in eighteen oh-nine. He tells us that he also built the root cellar, spring house, schoolhouse, and stable on the east side of the property, as well as the stone house and barn to the west, later known as the Spackman tenant house. He shares his hopes with his, for his son and heir, Thomas. He accompanies us, this is the tour now, he accompanies us up behind the barn to the stone ramp leading inside. We are now transformed to eighteen forty, Isaac walks back into the past. Stop two, Bank Barn Interior. Thomas appeared, this is Thomas Spackman that the tour people are meeting now. Thomas appears at the entrance to the barn and summons for us to come up at once. Once inside, we find reenactors baling hay, et cetera. Thomas tells us he inherited the farm in eighteen twenty-three after his father passed and shares his desire to further the family legacy. He tells of us, he has a brother, James, who was chronically ill and needed constant attention. That was, that it was his father's final wish that he provides for James the rest of his natural life. He says the barn had grown along with their family, that he and wife Hannah now have six children. We're told of the many uses of the bank barn, how they made it easy to get crops to market, which led to more traveler, or travelers and traders using the road now known as King's Highway, which led to the arrival of taverns and inns to provide comfort and rest to the rest, to the road weary. Thomas tells us of the silo that would eventually fall victim to time, but how important it was to them in the nineteenth century. Thomas shares his Quaker beliefs. The farm is less than five furlongs from the seventeen twenty-nine Callan Meeting House. He tells us that as a Quaker, he's opposed to slavery, that his father Isaac had immigrated as an indentured servant, servant, and that no man should be owned by another. He shares a secret with us. His neighbor just up the road is a noted abolitionist, Gravner Marsh. He goes on to tell us of the day a freeman named Richard Gibbs was cornered by slave hunters, but pulled off a wild escape and ended up here at the farm, where he was given safe haven in the barn, and that when the coast was clear, he and Gravner provided Richard with provisions before spiriting him off to freedom. The tour now, group one boards golf carts or walks downhill to the farmhouse. Along the way, we will pass sheep in a pen, chickens in pens, a spinning wheel, and a family member with a butter churn.
Stop three, eighteen sixty-five, Farm House, Hannah Spackman. Here we meet Hannah Spackman, Thomas's widow. She shares that her husband didn't live to see the end of the cruel institution of slavery, but was proud to have done his part when needed. Hannah tells us that we're standing before the west side of the house, the newer section. The door is open, and we can see somewhat inside the house. Cannot go inside the house, but you can see inside the house, I need to stress that. She leads us around the rear or northwest side of the house. She says that there once was a large windmill on the hill that some people in this room might remember. And from this vantage point, we can see a vast stretch of land and crops. She introduces us to a typical eighteen sixties day of life on the farm. Tending the farm animals, chickens, pigs, sheep, cows, horses, herding or rounding up the field animals, feeding and tending to the flocks, butchering and preparing hams for the smokehouse, collecting eggs and sometimes a chicken for the pot. The early morning milking, the laying and tending, the fires cooking, the hitching up of the draft horses or oxen for plowing and planting in the spring, working the fields in the summer, hoeing and weeding in the fall, harvesting and outing up the crops. Never a dull moment from dawn to dusk. She leads us around to the northeast rear corner and points out the large shed sticking out of the home, behind which is an old beehive oven, above which is a second floor woodworking shop, complete with a hoist and window door for lifting bulk items. She says the beehive oven opens on the, on the other side into the kitchen that was part of the eighteen fifty addition. She says the beehive ovens open. I'm losing my place, sorry. She leads us to the porch on the east side of the house. There again is an open door leading to the kitchen, and we can see partially inside where there is a mannequin dressed in period costumes, a table and vintage kitchen tools. Amanda Spackman approaches from the schoolhouse. Hannah notices and says, here comes our daughter, Amanda. While we are looking away, Hannah rings the dinner bell and walks off to the past. We are now in eighteen eighty. Stop four. Schoolhouse, Smokehouse, Root Cellar, Stable. Amanda greets us and tells us she and her twin, Emmeline, were two of five girls born to Thomas and Hannah. They have only one brother, Isaac. Much of their days were spent in the work of laundry, cooking, canning, and helping out with the rearing of the younger children. She walks along a path leading east past the root cellar to the open door of the schoolhouse, Smokehouse. Inside the door, we see a school desk, a blackboard easel, and a bell. Amanda tells of her early education in this small space that as many as five children at a time studied there. She says those early influences led her to become a teacher and that she and friend Edge both teach at Chestnut Dell School just down the road. Amanda shares her love of the farm and that she never wants to leave it. Amanda's now in teacher mode. She tells of the building's other two uses, Smokehouse above, Spring House on the other side. She describes the farm's close proximity to Beaver Creek, with Bondsville Mill upstream and Edges Mill downstream. How all of this came together, the farming led to mills, mills spawned industry, merchants required better connections to markets, better roads led to more travelers, travelers needed places to eat, drink, and rest, not just for themselves, but for their horses. Inns and taverns such as the Wildcat Inn, the Black Horse Inn, and the Gallagherville Inn began to spring up, and all of that helped to bring Chester County to the forefront of the U.S. agricultural world. Did we know that the first toll road in the United States was the route from Philadelphia to Lancaster that we now call Lincoln Highway? Next time you pass by Wiggins Tags, make sure to stop and pay the toll at the very first toll house in our nation. She points over to the stable and tells us it was once used as a blacksmith shop, and that there's another blacksmith shop down the road on Edges Mill. In the distance, we see a young man with a horse in front of the stable. The young man approaches and introduces himself as Isaac Spackman, grandson of the original Isaac, and tells us that after his father's death, he enjoyed farming for a while, but he has lost his taste for it, and he plans to leave that farm and move to Coatesville to start a career in the insurance industry. He talks about all of the opportunities that await him there with iron and steel mills, steel mills flourishing in that town. He says he's considering taking rooms there once he finds the right situation. He reminds Amanda that he has the right to sell the farm and knows how much she loves it. As long as she can maintain it, he'll allow her to stay on it. Stop five. Spring House. Amanda leads us down to the spring house and shows us the inside and tells us how wonderfully cool it is in there on a hot summer day like today, and how it kept the schoolhouse above cool as well. She tells us that her brother does indeed leave for the city, but that she will spend the rest of her days living on the farm and teaching at Chestnut Dell School. We can lean into this being the second chapter of the story of women fighting to save the farm. Two men in nineteen twenties attire approach from the house. Amanda walks away in the past. It is now nineteen twenty-six.
One of the two men is Horace, the last remaining son of banker Isaac. The other is a real estate investor from New York City. We overhear Horace saying that since Amanda's death, no one is interested in the farm anymore, and it's time to sell. The investor agrees to buy the land from Horace with plans to use it as a summer getaway for wealthy city dwellers. Horace walks off. The investor tells us that his plan was lucrative for a while, but then the depression hits. He too walks into the past. We are summoned to the side porch of the house by Penrose Davis. We are now in nineteen forty. Stop six. East Side Porch. Penrose welcomes us to the Pencraft or Pencroft Farm. He changed the name after he and his wife Mary purchased the farm back in nineteen thirty-six. He confides in us that Mary actually owns the farm, and though the name has changed, it's still part of, part of the Spackman lineage. You see, both me and Mary have Spackman's in or in our blood. Mary Davis, in the late eighteenth century, Mary's great-grandfather William had married Thomas Spackman's sister, Mary. Now that all of this beauty is back in the family, we aim to keep it. Come on, let me show you something. He shows us the exposed beams from the original structure and then leads us around to the front of the house. Penrose points up at the dividing line between the original eighteen oh-four house and Isaac's eighteen oh-nine expansion. He tells us more about the house, many rooms, attic, basement, design styles. A big house, big enough to have four generations living here during the war years. He sadly remembers their son, Penrose Junior, who would die in service to his country at Guadalcanal in World War Two. We can tell that he will never get over the loss of his namesake. Penrose looks around and then walks off to the past. We are now in nineteen seventy.
Marion Davis Griffith appears from the west side of the house and calls us to join her. Stop seven, west side of the house. Marion tells us about growing up here and of raising her own family here, that she cared for her mother, Mary, here, and when she could no longer keep up with the farm, George Zinn, her neighbor and friend, owner of Ingleside Farms, came to help with chores, saw that the farm was worked and crops were raised. My daughter, Mary Ann, knows I want to live here the rest of my days, right here, and she's promised to see that this farm's legacy outlives all of us. Not sure how she's going to manage that with all of her responsibilities, but it's always been women saving this farm, and I trust that she's got the strength and gumption to do just that. Marion Davis Griffith walks back to the past. Her daughter, Mary Ann, is seated on the patio, and we are now back in the present at twenty twenty-three.
Our narrator walks up and tells us, it's always been the women of this family who've saved the day. From Mary Edge Park in seventeen sixty-two to Amanda Spackman in eighteen eighty, right up to this young lady right here, Mary Ann Davis Griffith, made certain her mother's wishes were fulfilled, for the farm to be preserved for all time. Now, in two thousand and five, after Marion's death, Mary Ann sold this farm to Callan Township so long as it was kept as open space. As you can see, they've kept their word. The farm is still alive. Mary Ann, she's also still alive and well. Some legends say that Marion is still there, or still here, that she keeps watch over her beloved Spackman Davis Farm from that window right up there. It's high time we make, make her proud of what we've done with the family legacy. Our narrator encourages us to look over the land in all direction. This land continues to be farmed every year and will continue to be farmed as long as a farmer wants to grow crops here. New barn roof and driveway are always shadows of what's to come. If you can dream it, it can be done. If you can dream it, it can be done. Through belief, commitment, perseverance, one day at a time, all things are possible. Just like the story of the Spackmans and their farm, the secret is to never stop moving forward because the future will be here before you know it. Then he will escort the guests as they board the trolley to return to the parking lot. On the ride, their chaperone encourages them to take a map guide of Edge's Mill and make sure they stop in at Beaver Creek Tavern to learn more about the history of Cowan's taverns and ends. At the tavern, there'll be reenactors telling tales and sharing mounted visuals of the Cowan taverns doing business in the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries. The Ship Inn seventeen fifty-two, the Wildcat Inn, late eighteenth century, Gallagherville Inn circa eighteen oh one, and Black Horse Inn eighteen thirteen. Beautiful. Hey! Very good. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans. He's the one who put this all together.
You heard this tonight, doesn't it? You get out of coming to the tour in the twentieth.
Exactly.
We'd love to see you all there.
Do we need to pay for this visit tonight?
We pay to get on the trolley, right?
I just want to close on this by saying, you know, it's easy to have ideas, but then people have to put those ideas into motion. And this historical commission is outrageous. They've gone out, they've secured crops out the wazoo. They've secured the trolley. They've, Tom, secured the hill. He's painting the glider from the porch right now. It's a nineteen forties glider. They, all the things that we, you know, the actors are almost in place. Without people doing things, nothing gets done, so it's very exciting. The township has been very gracious. We don't need any money from the township. You know, we might want to use some of our budget to purchase. We're going to have period appropriate refreshments available. So we might need it for that, but Dawn got all the water donated. Donna's, you know, wrangling some animals. Jeffresses are bringing us some chickens. We have the pens at the farm already. The only thing that we're hoping we can get are, from our last, when we did the November event, the number one issue that people said was that it was not accessible for everybody. That not everybody could get around easily. So we thought, once the trolley dumps people at the barn, maybe we can borrow, rent some of the golf carts for the evening and pay for gas and put a visiting Ingleside in our program. And since it is a steep hill there, and we'll have a trolley coming in and out of that if the fire police or whoever handles those things could just be on hand to make sure things are handled that way. Otherwise, we're in really good shape and we're really excited. Oh, there is something, yes. The county has offered to do a drone shot of the four of the whole tour site and put it on their social media and for us to put on our social media. So if the township would be, and it's free, if the township would be in agreement with letting them do that, I could meet them and we could, they would shoot the, you know, from the parking area around the farm and then down Edge's Mill into Beaver Creek.
Oh, prior to the event?
Yes, they would do it in the next couple of weeks.
While it's empty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway.
It just sounds like there's a lot of fine tuning. I know Ray, you'll probably need to get involved in on this.
Ray's been huge.
Great. Thanks, Ray.
Kristin, thank you for letting us have the hill.
And just to clarify, is this an all-day event or is this just like a few hours in the afternoon? Is that what? Five thirty PM till seven PM? Okay.
It's groups of twenty-four on the shuttle. So when they register, they break into their groups. They meet Jane Park, Edge Park. They get, the first twenty-four get on the trolley. They get down to the barn base and get off. Trolley goes back to the top.
Gets some more though.
Gets the next twenty-four. By the time they get down, that first group is out of the barn and over at the house. And it just keeps going that way. We suspect it's probably going to be about a thirty-minute tour. But it'll be a blast. And there's a bell. We got to get on to business here, but there's this massive bell that may have been from Spackman Farm, may have been from somewhere else, but Tom is fixing it up right now. It's from eighteen forty? And it's brass. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Where did you find this? Oh.
It's going to go at Spackman Farm. Tom is building a stand for it.
So that's why you had the bell in the slideshow?
Well, that's a different bell. Kathy's lending us her bell. That's the dinner bell that is rung. It hangs on a pole behind the house and Marion used to, she even had a rope going into her room to summon people when she was dying, like in the haunting.
I thought it was for dinner. I thought you rang it for dinner.
Oh, yeah, for dinner too, right? Anyway, that's it. Thank you all for bearing with us.
Beautiful. We are looking forward to that, putting Cowan on the map.
Sounds like a CD in the making.
All right. All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Camp.
Excuse me. Thanks. So we have a proposed conditional use approval for Dana. I'm going to screw up the last name. Petrizio. Thank you. Apologize. She filed a condition use application on behalf of the property owner, which is DPP Twenty Twenty Two Properties LLC, which I think is the husband and the wife team here. The Farmhouse Coffee and Espresso Bar is what is proposed. The only part of this that required conditional use approval is that it's a drive-through. It has a drive-through. It's a five thousand four hundred and forty-five square foot restaurant building with a commercial drive-through. The board held the hearing on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The property is located at four thousand Lincoln Highway. I had prepared a decision and order that I circulated to the board. I also circulated it to the applicant's council. The approval or the order would approve the conditional use. It requires, it's under one fifty-five dash twenty-six C nine of the Township zoning ordinance to allow the restaurant with the commercial drive-through, and it has several conditions. I'll read those. The first one is that the drive-through must be developed in accordance with the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing. The plan that was presented at the hearing would have to be revised to comply with the outstanding comments from the Township Traffic Engineer Panoni of March twenty-ninth and the Township Civil Engineer Arrow of January tenth. Applicant must obtain all necessary permits from the Township and any other applicable government agencies in order to develop commercial drive-through. If applicant, there was an environmental impact assessment that was one of the exhibits at the conditional use. And in that, the property has karst geology, and so one of the recommendations from their geologist was that if during development they encounter carbonate rock or sinkholes, that report gave various recommendations for what they would have to do. So this condition follows back to that report and asks them to follow that advice. The next one was dealing with sidewalk. So the applicant testified that they were not intending to put sidewalk along the entire property frontage, but they are willing to provide, there was a portion of the property that, I think it's like eighty linear feet, where they are willing to install sidewalk. Mr. Evans had asked that that portion of the sidewalk be, have brick inlay similar to some of the developments that are going on on the western side of town. And then Mr. Mullin had asked that a condition be added that if in the future, the eastern portion of the property, which right now is proposed to remain open, that if in the future, that part of the property would be to be developed, that at that time, the sidewalk would have to go along the frontage. I did share this condition with the applicant's council, Mr. McKenna, and he indicated that they would accept that. So that's how we're addressing the sidewalk. The next one is one that Mr. Young always requests, and that's the energy efficient lighting, that those fixtures be installed. The property must be connected to public sewer, and they have to deal with all the requirements of the sewer authority for that. And then the other one also deals with additional right-of-way. So that road is a pendant road. So the details of how much additional right-of-way would be dedicated to either pendant or the township will be a detail that will be worked out during the development. That's a typical, typical, typical condition. So those are the proposed conditions. I don't know if anybody on the board has any questions about this, if the applicant has anything to say, but otherwise, it's for you to consider.
Missioners, any further questions?
When do you plan to break ground? I know, I know a place you can get a job.
This is just the zoning approval, so they will need to go through the land development process, which I think they're somewhat far along in, so hopefully we will get this done, you know. First, we need you to vote, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say so moved? Are we there yet?
Are we making a motion?
Yes.
All right. Entertaining motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero.
Great, thank you.
Come on up. Come on up.
Come on up. Say something.
Tell us your name.
Pete, Peter.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Peter.
Peter.
Oh, it's working.
Welcome.
Welcome to Cowan Township, Peter.
I have a suggestion for Peter. Don't ever cut your hair. Thank you.
Peter, thank you so much. Peter, are we going to see you in the restaurant?
I don't know.
In the back doing his homework.
Good help. Thank you.
Moving right along.
Kristin, I'm a dummy. I accidentally left the webinar. I'm back in now if you can. Yes, sir.
Sure, yeah. You know what? If you can, go ahead and take the podium. And you have a display too.
I do, and it's purely coincidental. John Hashem, I own the Craft House Restaurant, also known as Buchanan Mansion. So this is totally coincidental today that Scott happened to be here regarding a age-restricted development and also that the Historical Society happens to be here. So I don't know if this is good or bad, but we've been trying to sell the property and we've had three buyers approach the property. And unfortunately, there has been, whether intentional or unintentional, there has been a slight representation by the township that they have an interest in the property. And I love the building, don't get me wrong.
Mr. Hashem, I just want to put this in here and I'll share the email with you if you would like. The president and the chair and vice chair of the Historical Commission met with that gentleman. I was present as the secretary.
Okay.
That gentleman made some suggested that I recall Chair Stephen saying, sounded really good. I believe Don Coglan, who's behind you, would say the same thing. He was told it was a great idea, but he would have to go through Mr. Stackhouse and the township before the Historical Commission could say whether or not they would give their blessing. But that we liked what he wanted to do. He wanted to put his office in there. He wanted to use the restaurant. And he wanted to do events, I believe. He wanted to be able to do some events on the land. So that's the truth. I have an email between him and me, which I will send to you tomorrow if you'd like.
That would be nice.
And that way, we don't have things going around that aren't true.
So that was the second buyer of the property.
I know nothing about the first buyer.
So so in regards to that buyer in particular, he was given the impression that he would not be able to have the mixed use on the property of having his office and the restaurant.
That is not true.
Well, so I have that in writing from him in an email. He said where Mr. Stackhouse said he would have to go for a zoning variance.
Oh, this is between him and Mr. Stackhouse.
And that.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
So this is also something that I was trying to do with the property prior to putting on the market. Because we love the building. I mean, I love the historical aspect of the building. Even though it's been renovated a couple of times, it has two additions built onto it. And what was, for lack of a better term, conveyed to us is that, you know, we're stuck with the building as it is, and we're not going to be able to do anything else with the building. So there have been multiple restaurants that have failed in that property. We didn't fail. We closed because I contracted COVID and I almost died. And I was like, I'm done with the restaurant industry after thirty years. I tried to put another business into there just to support the mortgage and the taxes on the property because our taxes are about fifteen thousand a year and our mortgage is substantial, which I've been floating out of pocket for well over a year and a half now. And the concept that we put in there, we had some issues. And we decided to abandon it because, you know, we started to go through the process of doing it properly. Although I thought it was like a hobby, but I got the wrong, I got the vibe that we weren't going to get the approval, so we just packed everything up and moved it out. So where we're at now is the second buyer received that impression. The first buyer, I don't know if he received that impression or not. The third potential prospect was just from today. Contacted Mr. Stackhouse about reviving the concept that I had presented to the township in two thousand and eighteen about putting, ironically enough, age-restricted apartments on the building with a three-story structure, which the board at the time liked the idea. I had Ted Monzeluski from Architectural Concepts here. We put the drawing together. We presented it. You weren't present. So I just ran over and grabbed drawings. Sorry, they've been sitting for a while. You all want to see it. The craft house is in the front, the original structure, then the proposal was a sixty-two unit age-restricted apartments behind it, which was going to require some cooperation from the township because you'd have to relocate the first tee. So I know you've never seen this before, Mark. I think other members have.
Thinking it was up here for a while.
So anyway, he contacted Ray today and he was given the impression that this would not fly and that the township doesn't want anything other than a restaurant in there. Those were the words that conveyed, that it has to stay as its current use. It's not going to make it as a restaurant. We're selling the liquor license off. We want a different use for the property. I've approached the township in confidence to ask them about purchasing the building from us at a reduced price because I don't want to tear it down. But with a fifteen thousand dollar tax bill, I'm getting pushed up against the wall and with a floating SBA loan that's hitting ten percent, I'm getting pushed up against the wall with few options left. And I don't want to walk in here with a demo permit request.
Can I ask the first offer, what did they want to do with the property?
The first offer wanted to do a restaurant, but he fell apart because he realized it wasn't viable.
And the second one was a restaurant with an office?
With office space. It was a real estate agent and literally he came and sold the building with his wife. His wife fell in love with the building, just like we did back in two thousand and fourteen. And he wanted to put his real estate office in there and he wanted, his concept kept changing. Initially, it was just office space. And then he said, well, I've got a partner. They'll do the restaurant while I have my office space. He said, okay, that might be viable. And he wanted, which I didn't know, he wanted to add on a little banquet, some banquet facility off the side. But again, that deal fell apart because there was some somewhere, some inclination that the township had a vested interest.
Mr. Hashem, I would suggest to you
I would like that email, yeah.
I will, and I'll suggest to you that it fell apart because I will, and I'll suggest to you that it fell apart because he kept saying that he wasn't quite sure how he's going to do the financing on it. I don't know what he said to you, but again, I'll share the email with you.
That's interesting because he's.
Because I'm telling you, and you can ask Don Coglan who's standing right behind you. He was given much love from the Historical Commission because he was going to, it sounded like he cared about the building.
Yeah, so that's interesting to hear because actually he produced bank statements to prove his finances and there were seven figures. So that is a surprise. Now granted, that person was a little, little wishy-washy.
Yep.
Right? But the one from today is the one that kind of set me off. You know, with the feedback that I got, because he said, I'm going to call the township first. And then he specifically said to me, it sounds like the township, you know, doesn't want you to do anything with that property other than a restaurant and they're not going to be amicable to doing the project that I had already presented in 2018. And I was like, okay, that's a big red flag to me. I need to get in front of the board. So one of the ideas that I was floating out there was to give the building to the township in exchange for an approval to build 12 to 15 townhomes on the space behind the building headed towards Geo Carlson.
Right, but with that issue, that's land for the township owns.
Correct.
So I understand that you were asking to have a trade.
There's a little piece of it, I think the town would own, right?
Yeah.
The township.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's going to be a possibility.
Okay, and the reason being, I know there was some concern about open space and there might be a requirement of paying back taxes on the portion. I mean, you're talking three acres out of 120.
Financing of the golf course, isn't it? That the.
Bond issues.
The bond issues, yeah.
Covidance, grant money that was kept, has remained. It was not, it was not that, we didn't look at it.
Yeah, no, I mean, you came. You came, you presented that early, you know, what, two years ago, I guess. And we did, we looked hard at it and we realized.
Well, that, that idea was just last year. It wasn't presented in front of the board about giving the building to the township in exchange for approval to.
Do that, that's illegal. It is illegal. Cannot exchange land for approvals of a development when it's not zoned for that. Illegal.
It wasn't a good option, basically, but.
Miss Camp, I just wanted to interject here. Are you allowed to demo a building with an existing mortgage?
A violation of the mortgage.
Correct, we have to work on that.
Threaten the demo of the building is a reality.
It's very unfair to sit and try to hold these people to the belief that you're going to demo a building that you have a mortgage on.
I don't want to demo the building. We're actually.
But it would be a violation of your mortgage if you were.
Right, we're selling our liquor license, then we're paying off our mortgage. So that's part of our, that's part of the, you know, the fail-safe plan.
I will say that anybody has the opportunity to petition the Board of Commissioners for zoning change. So if Mr. Stackhouse, I don't know what the conversation was, but I believe the conversation was that under current zoning, the property is zoned R5. The restaurant use is a non-conforming use. So the restaurant use can continue. If somebody has a different use that they'd like to propose, they can petition the Board of Commissioners, but it has to be a very specific proposal. It's not a, well, we might do this, we might do that, and we might want to do this, on Sunday's will do that. It has to be a very concrete proposal that we can analyze all of the issues, not just zoning. This property is condemned right now. It is under, there are significant building code, electrical code, and fire code violations.
Sorry, it's not condemned.
Nothing can happen. It is condemned.
It's.
Under the township's codes, it is condemned.
Excuse me, it's registered as vacant.
And it would, nobody is allowed to occupy that structure right now. So beyond the zoning issues, there are a host of other code issues that would have to be taken care of before the property can be used. But I think the board is aware of that, but I just think people need to understand, nobody has said no. Everybody, everybody wants to see the success of that building. It is an important historical building in the township. People want to see it succeed.
Yes.
But you need to have concrete proposals before you, for you to react and respond to. There have, this plan that has been presented, we did a lot of research and we determined that that was not something that would be allowed to happen, given the way the golf course was purchased and financed.
And just a quick question, under today's zoning code, you can't occupy two different
Two uses.
Two uses in one single building.
Not without zoning relief.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Nothing is, nothing is impossible, but there's, there are procedures and processes that have to be followed.
So you would just, to do that, you would just need a zoning hearing board.
Couple of different ways. You could do a zoning amendment to the code to allow it, which, which again, part of your historical ordinance has adaptive reuse and multiple uses, so that is one avenue. Or you can always go to the zoning hearing board. So there are ways to get to yes.
Okay, so to follow up on that. So it kind of brings me around to the ultimate, part of the ultimate question. Is it township rezoning?
We're in the process of.
The process.
Okay. So if that parcel were to be included in the TV district, the Thorndale Village District, then, and I may not, I may not know this completely, but I think at that point, it makes, well, it definitely makes the property much more viable to an end user. And I don't know if the TV district allows for multi-use on a property or not. I don't know the answer to that question, but I think there might be a little confusion here. This concept was presented in 2018 and it was well received. There was no further research on it. The question, the more recent proposal that was off the books was about doing a land swap in giving the township the building in exchange for a parcel next to the building, which we would go through the process of the zoning improvements, nothing illegal, but it would be basically, you know, we would present it prior to making an agreement and if it looked like it was going to be feasible.
Why does it stop us here? It is clearly illegal. The township, it is completely illegal. The township cannot do swaps of property. Any property owned by a municipality must be put out for public bid. People have, these five people, and I do not want there to be any, you know, we've got a full room tonight. I don't want anybody to leave here with a misconception that the township was somehow interested in doing a land swap. It is illegal.
We did look into how we could make it work if it was possible. So I did talk with Mr. Hashem and I did talk with the solicitor, but you know, it was clear that it wasn't going to work.
I thought the overlying issue was the open space.
That we got, we got to the hurdle of the bond and the bondholders with Ms. Camp in my discussions with her. That was one of the biggest hurdles was the bondholders. But you know, if, if, it was my understanding that we would have to still put the property out for public bid.
Yep, any property.
Okay, I don't know if that was ever communicated. I thought where we had stopped our conversation was the open space and that it would have to be the county commissioners to approve it and that wouldn't be obtainable.
No, it was bondholder issue, was my.
Multiple issues. It is the county commissioners, it is the bonds, it is, there's a lot of issues.
And just for the, Mr. Mullen, I think because I'm a little uncomfortable with some of the assertions that are being made of the board this evening and of staff, I think that the direction that Mr. Hashem should have is if you have a concrete application, you have processes for that. If you want a zoning change, if you, you know, we have applications for all of that. If you want something, it needs to be in writing and memorialized and given to the board in a public sphere. You know, this is, is a very, as we see, because there is issues being created here that, you know, people are saying that this one's, you know, did this and this one said that and this one said this. The way to avoid that is we have a public application process. You fill out the application. It is subject to right to know. Everybody can see it. We have developers do it all the time. The Petrucci family just did this. That is our process.
Okay.
So if you have a purchaser or you have an interest, then fill out an application and it will go to the proper parties, whether it needs to be the zoning hearing board, whether it be the Board of Commissioners, whether it be the planning commission. But there, there should be no, maybe I'll do this, or maybe I'll do that, or maybe I'll do this, because it's very clear when you go in front of a board of your peers and they uphold the law, what the law is.
Okay, so Ms. Denny, first it's Hashem. I'm sorry, you've been pronouncing my name incorrectly for years. It's Hashem. So I'm on board with that idea. I have no problem with that, but when a prospective buyer comes to the township and has a meeting with one of the township officials, there should be no indication of anything, you know, oh, I don't think this is going to occur, oh, I don't. It should be black and white. Here is the process to apply for. I've had more than one buyer tell me that they feel that the township has an interest in my property and that they felt that there was resistance. That is the reason I'm here this evening.
Okay.
Okay? So we just need to keep it black and white.
Actually, I'm going to end this, John. One, I mean, I was being gracious to have you just stepped in in the middle of our, our meeting here. And unfortunately, this, this has gone way out of line here. You know, if there's an email that Mark wants to send to you, that's fine.
Great.
You can shoot us an email. We can look into whatever is going on.
Right.
There are options for you, for these developers that want to come in, like Ms. Denny has already pointed out. The one option you had proposed here, it was shot down a while ago. We cannot do that, okay?
This, this was not shot down.
Okay, well, that, that's the two, the 2018 one.
The land swap idea.
Okay, the land swap was shot down.
Was shot down.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's different.
Okay, but you know, and, and we can further, you know, go, you know, go back and forth with the emails or whatnot, so I don't want to take any more time tonight. We have a full agenda, unfortunately. I was just trying to be gracious and, you know, since you were stepping up at the, at the time, but I didn't know this was going to go on this long. So John, I appreciate the time.
That's great.
We can talk a little bit later.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And if there's any interest in the Historical Society or the township wanting to acquire the property, I'm more than happy to sell it at a discounted rate. I would like to see it preserved. I would like it to go to good use and.
We would too. Actually, yes, we would too.
Jim Buckles says, use it or lose it. So using it is good.
Okay, thank you, John. All right. All right, Ms. Camp, next on the agenda.
So next is a temporary access and construction easement. If you recall, at the last meeting, the board passed a resolution declaring an emergency condition for a portion of Geo Carlson. There's a retaining wall along the southern edge of the right of way that's in danger of collapse. We were able to work very well with the property owner, Stephanie DeForno. We, she granted a temporary access and construction easement agreement for the township to be able to get a contractor in there to temporarily shore up the wall. So we have this easement agreement signed by the property owner and we just want the board to approve it so that we can get the contractor lined up and go to work.
Commissioners, any questions on this? Pretty clean. And that we are protecting their driveway, their parking area?
Yes.
Okay. No questions from commissioners? Any questions from residents? Of course, Tony, yes, come on up.
I told you last time.
Go ahead, Tony.
On the north side, when the wall was falling in, they dumped boulders in the creek, which of course had blocked the creek, the water from running. I just want to know, they're not going to do the same thing on this side because, you know, we can't restrict that water.
The wall's going to be, right now it's just going to be shored up, Tony. And then the next step is to evaluate exactly what's going on and make plans to fix the wall.
What are you going to shore it up with? That's what I'm asking, because they shored it up with boulders.
No, 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 no. There, there's a plan actually that'll be made public. It's actually a blocking mechanism where there's, there's a block in the ground, there's an arm that goes up to basically it's pinned against the wall.
Okay. I just don't want to see the streams blocked anymore. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. No other questions? Entertain a motion to authorize the board president to sign the temporary access and construction easement agreement between Callan Township and Stephanie DeForno.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion's good, five zero.
That's it, I think, I don't think I'm needed. Is there anything else? Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Historical Commission. I want to put that on my calendar.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
And now we have Township Engineer, Carl. How are you this evening?
Good evening, Commissioners and Township Staff, Carl Schmidt with Arrow.
Carl.
We have four items on the agenda for your consideration this evening. Item number one, this is a request for payment application number four for construction master services in the amount of $137,039. This is for the Moore Road Bridge replacement that was mentioned at the top of the meeting that it is, work completed and traffic, open for traffic. So this is their final payment short of their retainage.
And my only question, I asked Ms. Denny this earlier today, she kind of pointed it out because of course we, I need a magnifying glass to read this, but the cost of the $4,632 difference, what was removed from the project?
Take care. The item stricken in this one was $4,000 drainage enhancement. They didn't have it done at this time, so we held it on the application. So we struck a weepole drainage pipe that was, I think, item 29 on the small print.
And that was a 4632 difference?
Correct.
Okay. And is that being installed later and at a date or they don't need to install it?
It will, it wasn't accounted for in this pay period, so we'll, we'll have it in and it'll be in the final payment.
Oh, okay. Part of the retainer, because you just stated all that's left is a retainer?
Yes, but it was something that we thought wasn't in and we, I wanted to get the application in, in a timely manner for this meeting, so I struck it rather than, I think, I thought it was not included, but they corrected me, but the paperwork was in already.
Oh, okay, okay. So it has been installed.
It has.
We're just going to pay it later.
Correct.
All right. I answered my questions. Commissioners, any other questions?
No. Can I just ask if, if we can get a copy of the, where we are with all of these projects? Do you have a spreadsheet of that already, Lisa? Or if you can just send that to us once this is updated?
Lose track after a while?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, any questions on this? Anymore? Residents? Did not see any here. Zoom world? Entertain a motion to approve payment application number four.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero. Next.
Thank you. Request, item number two, request for consideration to approve payment application number two. This is to KBC Construction in the amount of $9,660.60. This is related to the North Bailey Road drainage improvements. That project was completed near the end of March. This is the final payment. This is their retainage.
Final payment. Commissioners, any questions on that? Everything looks good up there in North Bailey?
I like final payment.
All right, any questions from residents? None at this time. All in favor to approve, or no? Entertain a motion to approve payment application number two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Is good, five zero. Next.
Thank you. Item three, request for consideration for approval on payment application number two. This is to Moore Construction in the amount of $64,284.30. This is in relation to the Barley Sheaf Swale Construction. This is their second payment application. It brings it to about, when you combine it with payment number one, it equates to 31% of the budget. And if we have time allowed, we'll, we'll show you some pictures afterwards on how far along all these projects are.
If you haven't seen that yet, drive up Barley Sheaf Road, it is really, it should last, you know, more than the previous ones.
Nuclear bunker, right?
Nuclear bunker, right?
So, I, I mean, it is, it is substantial. Um, and hopefully. I mean, we, it's been a continuous problem on Barley Sheaf, so it would be nice to solve that problem. Especially for those homeowners that live there and always worried about their driveways washing away.
The one house that goes over, did they get a new culvert?
Uh, each driveway is getting a culvert.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, that's part of this. Okay. Yeah, no, I've noticed. It, it does. It looks beautiful, actually. Really. Just get rid of that bamboo coming down the street.
Yes.
All right, uh, questions, commissioners? Residents? None at this time? All right, entertain a motion to approve, uh, payment number two to Moore Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner, uh, Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero.
Very good. Last item on the agenda, this is, uh, request for consideration to accept, uh, the, uh, uh, low and responsible bid for the two thousand twenty-three, uh, road program. Um, we received, uh, four bids. Uh, we provided, uh, a review and a recommendation letter. Uh, this is, um, for the acceptance of, uh, Long's Asphalt for your two thousand twenty-three program.
So, so just to mention in that, that includes Sixteenth, Fifteenth, Sterling, Oak, and Walnut. But we were able to add the ad alternate of doing the municipal park, um, parking lot, because the bids came in so well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Kristen, I gave you a little bit wrong information. It's, it's actually Oak from Coastal City Limits to Seventeenth. Fifteenth Avenue from Olive Oak, Sixteenth Avenue from Olive Oak, and Seventeenth Avenue from Olive Oak. They cross them with Sterling.
And then a municipal park, is it down into the park too, or just in front of the baseball?
Just in front of the baseball.
Okay, right where it's really bad there. Okay. I know that there's, uh, I don't know whether they're intentional or not, or they're like humps. Are they supposed to be speed bumps? Is that what they were?
So, we had a lot of conversation about that when, when we were out there, and i- if it was, in one spot, there's, there's basically, it looks like a speed bump all the way across, including in the parking lanes. Um, why, we don't know what that was for, because if it was supposed to be that, it really isn't where it should be. So, we're eliminating all that at this point.
It's just a tripping hazard at this point.
It is. It's more of a hazard than it is, uh, traffic coming, though.
Okay. And I can't seem to find that, what was the total on, uh, doing all, everything?
Three oh eight.
Three oh eight? Three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three and fifty-five cents. What were we, uh, budgeting?
Three, we had three fifty-nine budgeted, or three ninety-five.
Oh, wow.
You know, I did have one question with, uh, Long's Asphalt. The first line, maintenance and protection of traffic. Their price was seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the others were like eighteen thousand and fifty thousand and thirteen thousand. Is there any rhyme or reason on this?
So, the, the way the Pennsylvania bidding laws go, it's the overall price, not the unit price.
Okay.
So, you know, i- if you did it as an ad or a bid alternate, then that would be different, but it's the overall total bid project.
Okay.
And they, they, they could be using somebody in-house, like, I'm just speculating, they could be using somebody in-house instead of hiring, like, fire force?
Yeah, if, if you're, that's what I'm assuming, is if you're asking why they were so low, they probably use their own people to flag as opposed to, uh, hiring a completely separate company.
Okay, I, I just didn't want to see orange cones.
No, we've used, we, uh, Long's did our road program last year.
Okay.
Uh, so we're familiar with them, and they've always done a really good job.
Uh, perfect.
Also, Raymond and I, today, we're discussing, we, we've pretty much moved through the capital plan for the streets that, that we started the capital plan in two thousand sixteen. Um, that's something for two thousand twenty-four that we are gonna have to reevaluate. You know, we're, we're back at basically the bottom of the list. Um, also, in that area, Reed Street will be done as a, as a part of the Stormsor project and a sanitary project. Um, so we specifically went for roads in that area, so that entire section of the, you know, the township essentially is getting treated.
Just a question, can the money left, the, that we had budgeted, can we use that money to restart a capital plan?
We, we could. We absolutely could.
So that we can plan for next year?
Yes.
So, I, I think maybe, because that has worked out, that capital plan has worked out well.
Yes.
And when people ask why we're doing what we're doing, it's not, you know, the five people up here decided that Barley Sheaf should get paved, or, you know.
There's an, it, it, that's probably one of the best tools, I think, we have.
Yeah. I think maybe we should use some of that leftover money to, the budgeted money to, um, create a new capital plan.
Okay. I think that's a good idea.
And then, just while we're on it, uh, now that I mentioned Barley Sheaf, there, there are two pretty large pieces where the, the asphalt has come up, uh, coming down the hill. Um, one is near the construction site, and one is about three quarters of the way up the hill. Um, it looks like the, the overlay has come off, and it's a pothole now.
All right. All right, any other questions on, uh, the lowest bid? The road program? Residents, any questions? Glad to see this happen, I think. Are, are they gonna stripe the parking lot, or is it just, uh?
Yes, that included, uh, identifying, uh, parking spaces, and there's a, uh, handicapped, uh, access to the sidewalk, uh, up towards the, the, um, south side.
Okay, perfect. No other questions?
There is an individual, um, J D.
Just name, uh, state your name and address?
Hi, this is Joseph Daniel Hagan, uh, two seventeen Park Drive. Um, and I, I know it doesn't really have much to do with the things around here, but I'd asked the question last, uh, at the last meeting, and since the engineer was there, I just was curious. I, I see that they've been working on some of the improvements over here for the, uh, water, um, movement. And I'm just curious if there, if there was anything that was in consideration for the basin, because, uh, it seems like there's been improvements to drop more water into the basin, uh, but the basin was already having some trouble holding water. Um, and then also with that thing from earlier in this meeting, if they are going to finally start work on that, uh, over fifty-five apartment, uh, if that's also gonna lead to water going into that basin, if there was any plans to do improvements on the basin here at Park Drive.
Okay, I understand. I'm gonna defer on the second part of the question, um, and we can follow up, but I, I don't have any information on, on that. The first part of the question, um, so the, the question is if more water's coming in. The, the basin is sized on a particular area, and the water that comes in from that area, since that contributing, um, basin of area hasn't changed, the stormwater basin is sufficient as it's been designed. So, um, how much water and how fast it gets into there is, is, um, uh, the basin's, uh, sufficient. Uh, we've also, uh, in the last end of the project, uh, and we'll have some photos in, in a second on this, um, improve the way the, um, water gets out of the culvert in the basin, and then over to the outfall structure. So, normally, you want to get the water into the basin as fast as you can, and basins are designed to hold the water for a longer period of time. So, you rush the water in, and then you bleed the water out. So, no additional volume is coming in. Uh, the basin should perform as it's always been designed to. So, I've, I've been over there numerous times, and in big storms, that basin fails.
Right, right. The, i- i- if you get any measurable amount of water, it, it, it comes over, and that's, that, and that becomes the question is, are those walls, over time, have they, have they, you know, sunk? Or, or, or need any kind of rebuilding or such, because, yeah, you get, you get a good storm, and, and it flows over, and it comes over that, that basin wall, and goes through our neighbor's yard, uh, the, the neighbor out from there, and then comes down into this yard, and, and builds, and builds up.
I, I don't, I don't know if you've seen what, what, uh, Carl was talking about. We did recognize towards the end of the project that the outfall was actually lower than the rest of the basin, which, which we're assuming wa- has been the case for a long period of time. So, one of the things that was literally just done recently was at the end of the outfall, that was dug out, entrenched out to the overflow that then goes into the stream if, if the basin gets that high. We do feel that that's gonna, uh, you know, assist in assuring that the water gets to the overflow as opposed to come on up over top of the bank of the basin.
Fantastic. I, I, I will be looking forward to seeing that. I mean, admittedly, we've had lower, lower amounts of rainfall in the past couple of years. Uh, so we'll see, we'll, we'll see what happens, and, uh, I'll, I'll be interested to see if that does improve it. Thank you.
Right.
So will I, though. But, we're, we're hoping, you know, we're definitely hoping to monitor that as the time goes on.
Same, same. Thanks.
So, Mr. Haggins, as, as far as the Bonneville Road Apartments, um, the plans are here in the township, if you wanted to come, come look at it, but as a part of any, our stormwater ordinance, any new construction, it has to be a zero impact to the area around it. Um, so, you know, it's been five years since we've dusted these plans off.
Right, right. I've, I've been at some of the meetings from like ten years ago, yes, it's, it's been a thing.
I, I haven't looked, and that's part of the, the discussion that we had tonight, is that they are gonna have their engineer, you know, look at the plans again to make sure that they do meet stormwater, uh, current stormwater requirements. So, but you're more than welcome at any time, you know, you know, contact our offices, and, and we can have those plans available.
Fantastic. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Stay on, um, in, in a second here, I'll go through some photos.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, uh, project number eight is Park Drive, and there's some photos of, uh, what Ray just mentioned, the waters coming into the basin, less impeded, and the stormwater outlet structure, uh, was in disrepair, and that's repaired, so the water should be exiting the basin properly as well. So, we, we have, uh, one item off, uh, off the agenda, and in the interest of time, I'll go through this really quick. Kristen Denny had a really great idea to go.
We never voted on the road.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you.
All right, entertain a motion to accept twenty twenty-three road program bid.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner, uh, Evans, and this is for, um, Long's Asphalt, in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three and fifty-five cents. Hopefully, I can read that right.
Eight, six fifty-three, and fifty-five cents.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Moving on to pictures.
Yes. So, um, is it possible to go back one? Uh, thanks, I just wanted to, uh, start off with, uh, the brief list. Um, so, Ms. Denny had an idea of, uh, presenting a couple pictures to the board. Uh, so there's eight projects this construction season. Uh, we, we picked, uh, beginning, middle, and end, uh, photos, uh, and I thought I'd, uh, add the, um, information regarding what's completed, and a frequent question on what is funded by FEMA, and what is, um, out of the township budget. So, if we could go to, um, the first one, Moore Road. Thank you, at the top of the meeting, it was, um, it was mentioned that it's done. These are just a couple representative pictures of when the, uh, old culvert was removed and the new, uh, structure was being built. Um, okay, the next one, please. And so, uh, what's of interest is, um, that, uh, this is a completed project, and the, and the gas pipe that was, um, a common discussion point in the beginning, it kind of slowed us down. Uh, that remains in place. Uh, Pico's got plans to move that. Last photo is, um, no traffic on it, but it's, uh, open, lines painted, and ready for business. Okay. Uh, North Barley Sheaf, this was a culvert project. Uh, there was some improvements done on the inlets, uh, and the pipes, and the, uh, uh, swale on the way out. This shows, um, some pretty large concrete end walls going in. Most common, you guys had old corrugated metal pipes underground, and what was, um, used, uh, in replacement of them are these elliptical concrete pipes. Can carry more water, and it's gonna, uh, uh, outlast all of us. Next picture. There's one of the pipes going in. Uh, this project's done, the road was paved, and, uh, this one, um, is, uh, one of the completed projects. Next. South Lloyd, this was also identified during, uh, post-IDA, uh, and this was a stream, and, and many of the projects, the stream was bypassed. It's interesting that the stream had to be pumped across the road. The work done, everything was, um, brought up to standards. Again, it was a culvert pipe. This is a outlet structure, and then, um, some more of that rock that's a little more durable than, than what was in place before. Okay. Uh, this is another picture of the same project. Uh, this is the s- stream bed. Uh, it had to have, um, it was included some retaining wall structures just for, uh, integrity of the, of the soils, roads open. Uh, all that's left is, uh, painting. This is one of the projects that's done. Uh, North Bailey Road, these were two pictures from the beginning, a lot of, um, erosion, and, um, the old corrugated metal pipe just basically rusted out over time as well. Uh, there were some, um, sinkholes uh, as the soil goes into these pipes. Okay. And then the work included, um, the old CMP pipe coming out, the new concrete going in, uh, pretty big, uh, uh, concrete inlet boxes. It, it allows for more drainage off the road, and the last, uh, there's upper right is the restoration between the two, uh, residents. That's where the work was done. The pipe goes, uh, down that path, and the last photo on the lower right is the, uh, pavement. Very good. Uh, so here's Barley Sheaf. Uh, we, we talked about the large, uh, more durable rock. Indeed, the residents came out and told us a story about how frequently it was, uh, uh, kind of repaired, and rocks would just run down the hill due to the flow of the water. Uh, these rocks are sized not to do that, so, uh, should be, uh, working very well. It's about two-thirds of the way through. This one's not completed yet, but everything's, uh, on, on track. Here we are, right outside the window here. Kristen can see it out of her window. It's progressing well. Um, the old bridge was taken away, uh, the creek is being bypassed. Uh, where we stand now is, um, the, um, the foundation is firmed up with this, uh, grouting, so it can sustain the bigger, heavier bridge. Uh, we were told this, uh, today during a meeting, I thought it was noteworthy. Next week, the footer foundations go in, you might see some crane activity, so some of the uh, lowest elements of the bridge is going in. The week after, the week of June fifth, you'll see the arches going in. There's still several weeks of, um, uh, finished work, but it's gonna be a very visible, uh, activity when uh, large span arches are placed. So, these were a couple of the, um, items that, um, weren't FEMA-related. Uh, you guys wanted to take down an old, uh, maintenance building. Um, that was done rather quickly. The lower right-hand corner shows the, um, look of the golf course now. Uh, that project's done. Uh, and the last one is, uh, Park Drive. Uh, this is the one we were discussing earlier. So, um, I brought a laser pointer, it's not working on the, uh, screens, though. So, the first photo is the inlet into the basin. That elliptical pipe was sixteen inches buried, the old corrugated metal. The, the bottom of the pipe was too low, it was, the, the water was impeded getting into the basin. So, there's a swale that allows the water to come out. It'll come out, um, uh, quite a bit, uh, quicker. It's not impeded, it won't back up into the streets. So, the second photo is showing how it comes out down into the basin. That encompasses the whole basin in that, in that photo. But it, it's also, um, getting into the outfall structure, which has also been upgraded. So, the water's gonna come off the road quicker, and, um, the outfall structure will function, uh, quite a bit better, so, um, flooding should be, um, averted. I think that's it. Uh, nope, Park Drive, those are the, um, culverts, uh, going in, and the inlets on the road. Uh, that's where the water will go out of those into the basin.
How, how many of those were installed?
For Park?
Yeah, is, just those two, the?
No, there's, there's three new inlets that were installed for Park. There was a series of pipes that were upgraded. Uh, and then the main pipe from the roadway, you guys have an easement, a drainage easement into the basin. That one was all, uh, replaced and upgraded as well.
The basin itself, is that part of the homeowners association, or that property there?
I'm not sure if that's, uh.
Or is that township?
It is ours.
Yeah, you guys mow it.
And I'm I'm just trying to picture. See Donna, have a good weekend. The the basin itself would um can you give me an idea where along Park Drive? Cause it if you're driving in and Park Drive comes around, is the basin back behind those houses on the right or is it further in the development?
If you go in Geo Carlson, like you're gonna go to Meadow Lake or Milltown or whatever they call now, go straight to where the buses are, you know, at
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Make the left and it's like two or three houses up and it's on the right. It's behind those homes.
Yeah, I did walk.
And like the first two homes or three homes, that's the ones when the when it it comes over the wall, it inundates their their homes.
Well, they're also the ones that took a lot of damage from Hurricane Ida.
They got hammered.
They they had to move.
Um I think the other thing is
relocate for a period of time.
One of the other issues is when the stream rises too, it meets the basin wall and and then there's nothing that can exit because the stream is higher than the exit point. So that 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 is some of the issue too.
Yeah, that's why I said, I mean, I don't I don't know if we're ever gonna resolve the whole issue because there's a couple issues there. But this should significantly improve that situation in that in that area.
Okay.
Very good. That was it.
Perfect. Carl, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for the update on all the projects.
Well, I'm just gonna ask this the stupid question. You think July, right?
Um we are on track for July, yes. For municipal drive, that's the question. So it's gonna be very visible with the arches going on, but um we have a very specific schedule. Uh we we um meet in the township weekly and with the contractor every other week and and so we we provide the updates and if anything changes to um they're tracking um mid to end of July, if anything changes, uh we'll be.
Thank you. And and how are we doing tracking with the? I know that some, a lot of us wasn't going to be able to be covered by FEMA because they were already previously damaged or how's it looking? Do we have any idea yet?
So we submit the actual, you know, the the process with FEMA is you complete the work.
Yeah.
You submit and we'll determine what we're gonna pay, unfortunately.
If we're gonna pay.
Do they do that?
Do they do that as a whole package or each as each project is submitted or each project's finished, do you submit?
So that that's a good question. I don't know how they're gonna handle. They they can pretty much do it any way they want. What what we've been doing is all along. We've been sending as as we got the bid specs, I sent them and as the bid specs got approved or the bid got approved, I sent that and uh right now, what I'm working on, we just started today, is all the ones that are shown completed. Um arrows getting them into a separate file. Uh hopefully next week when I get back, I will be able to then get the proof of payment and I'll start sending them individually as well um and and see where we're at. I mean, I haven't, I had some questions about one project last week. Other than that, my understanding is, you know, it's in full review and I'm hoping that they'll dedicate some money to us.
Okay.
Soon.
There was talk as we've been going through phone call after phone call after phone call. It it could be by project or it could be a global settlement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's the, you know, we wait and see, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, keep us up to date when that uh municipal bridge is gonna finalize. Some of us might actually wanna be there. It'll bring a tear to my eye, I know. So looking forward to it.
It'll be worth the fanfare.
Bring your big scissors.
Yeah.
You have them already.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Carl.
Alright, have a good holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Oh, yeah, enjoy.
Good weekend.
Next, we have township manager, Ms. Denny.
Uh yes, the first thing and I'll I'll be very brief. Uh we have the Cowan Township Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. We've had this hanging out there for some time. We've been waiting for their their council to finish reviewing it. They have reviewed it. Officers have accepted the provisions of the contract and to ratify the contract.
Commissioners, any questions on it?
No.
Josh, I ju- I just wanna say thank you for all the time involved. Yeah. And Kristen, you did an excellent job, as well as the officers who were involved. Uh it was great to be part of that.
I think we all came in with the idea that we were going to work towards a contract, not work towards uh arbitration. So I think that that made it easy to 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 negotiate.
Well put. Alright, uh questions? Commissioners, any questions from residents? None at this time? Entertain a motion to ratify.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
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 She's good, five zero.
Um the next item, and I I have to give full credit to Abby Smol on this. She is consider continuing to to chip away at the Brever Creek Trail. Um she is applying for another grant through D C E D. Um it is in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand and eight hundred dollars to finish segment five, which would get it to the point of being bid ready. Um so we would have a twenty-five thousand dollar match. Like, you know, this is huge portion to actually it it is hard to get engineering money um to complete these trails and and we we got one grant last year. We're hoping to get another one this year. And then the following year, we'll be putting in money to actually start construction of this baby.
Things like these trails are going to bring people to our township. They're gonna come here to ride their bikes. They're gonna come here to walk. They're coming, come here to birdwatch and then they're gonna wanna go get something to eat. And they're gonna be tired from walking, so they'll wanna do it right here in this township. This is great stuff. And while they're here, they might even like walk the trail and then go play a round of golf, you know, play nine holes.
Just a question, Kristen. What the where would this, would this get us from Lloyd Park to here or where?
This portion, this would just be the portion by Lloyd Park. This is segment five.
Okay.
So this would just be the portion starting the Lloyd Lloyd Park area.
Okay. And that segment would be then ready for?
Forbidden.
Forbidden. And then uh?
Then we'd move into segment four and 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 keep moving until we're down to segment one.
Mm-hmm, okay. And segment one would be the far end uh down uh by Barley Sheath uh and Geo Carlson. Okay. Yes.
You know it, you know it.
I can't tell you how many people he had out there trudging through the mud and in swamp lands to uh try to get this started.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah, yeah. Towards Abby, we are not worthy. Abby is amazing. Thank you.
We are lucky to have her.
Mm-hmm, we are. Alright, uh so uh we just need to
Motion in a second.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by everyone else. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking forward to that. Alright, and we have an update on uh our favorite road?
Yes, as Mr. Evans had mentioned earlier, um there was a meeting this past Tuesday with the municipalities that are impacted. Um you know, the long and short of it, we the dates are established. Contractor is established. Brubaker will be doing the work. There is going to be a car detour and a truck detour now. And there is also potential that Pendot is going to be doing work around the East Breezeville area. But they are still trying to get, they are still trying to get permits from the Conservancy and they are still trying to get Pico out there for utility relocation. Which as we know, we've just gone through that process and Pico's not, you know, gonna be able to, even on a good day, it's two months for Pico to do relocation. Um so the the contingency there basically is the car route will go Bonsville. Truck route will be, you know, thirty to eighty-two. So like, you know, it is all all ships ahead at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Get it done.
Yeah. So the other thing we we and I forwarded this to the board earlier this week, um Pendot will be doing some paving in the township this year. We don't know its dates exactly, um but it will be Collin Road from Fisherville to Lincoln Highway.
That's desperately.
Collin Road needs it.
Excellent.
Is that like the north section or the the full Collin Road?
Full Collin Road.
That's all for me this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next, Minutes to approve. Blow through this. We have uh April twenty-seventh, uh Board of Commissioner Minutes.
Make a motion to untable the Minutes from April twenty-seventh.
Second.
Have a good weekend, Chuck. Adam, take care. Thanks, guys. Okay, motion to uh untable. Do I have a second? Okay, moved in second. Am I right? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
It has been untabled. Uh any questions, uh changes, additions for the Minutes? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Uh next, uh the Minutes for May eleventh. Of course, I will need to abstain since I was not at that awesome meeting.
Quick meeting.
What, yeah, go ahead, go.
It's funny how fast it go when you're right here.
You know I'm back, cause it's nine thirty and we're not done.
Yeah, we're like, whoa.
Yeah, that's rough. Alright. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner uh Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh next, uh meat and potatoes. The, well, no, no, Finance Department first.
That is the most important part. That is the, that is the meat.
That is, that is the meat and potatoes.
I will keep it brief as well.
That's the bread and butter.
Well, you know.
That's the bread and butter.
The veggies.
Uh, we have the, let me see, now you got me all thrown off here. Um uh audit is still coming along. Uh we finished the authority. So that was completed uh a month and a half prior to last year's um ending. Um and hoping to have the township done by June, which will also be about two months earlier than we did last year too. So cleaning a lot up there. Um just again, our investments are coming in really hot and heavy. Um with our CDs, our interest income for the years um at around eighty thousand. So we're bringing in a little bit of money there. Uh we have um at the next, I think at the next meeting maybe uh we'll discuss uh some actuarial uh for our police pension. Um we got some notes from Mock and Hoff. And that is all I have, other than the bills list.
Commissioners, any questions on the finances?
It is nice to still see the golf course in the positive territory on here.
Yeah, I didn't wanna take the thunder away. Um I'll I'll let her uh handle that portion of it. But yes, coming along very, very nicely.
Alright, uh any questions on the check run? Excuse me. If not, entertain a motion to uh approve the check run.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Hey, motion's good, five zero. Sign away.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Next, meat and potatoes.
Have a great weekend, Lisa.
Are we? Un- under Chief Elias, we do have the biannual memorandum of understanding, the MOU with the Coatsville Area School District. This happens every two years. Commissioners, uh get a chance to read all that?
Glance at it.
I'm apologizing on behalf of Chief Elias. He is here tonight, but he was, there there's um several issues going on in the township this evening and he is attending to those issues.
It's not a problem.
And this is a standard form that we?
Yeah, we do this every two years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did, I did.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Coatsville Area School District.
Second.
Moved in second. Uh before I take a vote, any questions from residents on this? Any questions in Zoom world? Alright, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Now we have uh Fire Department Chief Taylor. Patrick, welcome.
Good evening. I will also make this brief, cause I know multiple people wanna get out of here for the, start their long weekend probably.
I I was on a long vacation. I got all night. I feel good. I feel rested.
Well, that, I know somebody else who was also recently on a vacation too. Uh but uh the the um only thing uh last month was uh lots of calls for gas leaks with uh being struck, especially on Lincoln Highway. They're digging, so we spent quite a few hours babysitting leaking gas pipes until Pico uh showed up. So I know there's a lot of development coming, so please encourage them to do the PA one call. And the other thing is uh we've been inundated with uh smoke detector installs and even a few bed shaker alarm installs over in the Barley Sheaf Farm Development, which is great. We wanna make sure everybody's safe. Um but if there's anybody that needs smoke detectors, obviously either reach out to the uh Red Cross or there's information on our fire company website uh for how to procure those. Um and we'll uh be more than happy to either ourselves for the Fire Department install them or uh coordinate with the Red Cross to make sure they are also installed. But that's all I have, unless there's any questions from our report.
How's our new fire truck coming?
What's that? Which one? I know Ray and I have had some conversations and hopefully um we can get something in front of uh the board here.
Excellent.
Sure.
Excellent. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think once uh they start the detour and um
Yeah.
Everyone's hitting the bypass, uh both of you guys are gonna be busier than you wanna be.
And I know Paul doesn't like to see orange cones, so he might be screaming at us for closing the road.
Yeah.
So I'll keep that in mind. So have a great weekend and a great holiday.
Thank you, you too. Enjoy yourself.
Next, uh Mr. Sackhouse. We have uh Building and Life Safety and Public Works.
Uh Commissioners, if you're looking for my report, you actually don't have it.
Oh, we don't.
Uh I was on vacation last week and I completely lost track of time, so I do apologize. I'll catch up formally uh next month. Uh just a couple highlights. Obviously, you know, permits just keep coming in. They they definitely don't stop. It's a busy time of year. Uh property maintenance issues this time of year are always a big thing. Uh this month, we actually unfortunately had to issue one hundred and twelve uh notices for property maintenance issues and fifty-three of those were for grass, for high grass. So
It's growing quick. It is.
Yeah, it did. And we actually waited, uh which sometimes isn't isn't a plus because then it's real high. But we tried to wait because it happened very quickly. Um and and hopefully, you know, everybody will get it under control and we won't have that issue moving forward. Um I did recently, actually just last week, got a right of way uh basically a road opening permit for Aqua. Um if you remember, I guess it was last year, there was a bunch of drama about uh road markings on Lloyd Avenue. Well, so now Aqua did uh apply for a permit to do some test boards in the right of way on South Lloyd Avenue at this point. So I haven't seen anything for North North Lloyd Avenue. Um but they're still not really forthcoming with what they're doing other than locating their line on uh South Lloyd Avenue. But just in case you hear some grumbling about that. Um Coatsville School Prom, the junior prom was last week. Uh we did those inspections. They went well. Um this coming Thursday, um next Thursday uh will be the inspection for the senior prom that'll occur on Friday. Um pub- from a public works perspective, stormwater work continues. They just finished up uh about four hundred and fifty linear feet of stormwater pipe uh replacement. Uh they had to do side or curving and paving as well, so that project's completed. Uh now they'll be moving to uh Sixteenth Avenue. We have to replace uh some pipes and inlets across uh Sixteenth Avenue at Sterling in anticipation for the uh road program. So they're starting that Tuesday. Uh the lighting program uh has started, the the swap out for all the lights. Uh they've been doing that for like the last couple of weeks. Um obviously, there's some complaints, you know, pretty much right of way. We'll see where that goes. We're investigating them. We gave that information to uh the lighting contractor and they're gonna track some of that down and see, you know, what's
What type of complaints?
Too bright.
Oh. That's cause they've been off.
Oh, and and that's exactly, that's part of the problem. Um that's not the answer we've been giving back to the people. Uh but that's definitely part of the problem. And uh but the contractor, we we did give the contractor the information for the areas and they they are gonna evaluate that and give it a little bit of time and we'll see if those, you know, people and give it a little bit of time and we'll see if those, you know, people are still as concerned or they just kind of get used to it, yeah.
I, I believe that they could be tweaked too if...
Absolutely, they can, but we obviously don't want to do anything till they're all installed and it's not complete yet. I, I think he said it's probably like seventy-five percent completed though.
Have we the decorative lights out on Lincoln Highway? They haven't gotten to them yet?
No, they're...
Still waiting for them to ship.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and a comment about the lights, when, when the pump station was installed and they had that light on the side, I remember coming home and it was just so bright. Only because I'm not used to a light there. And after a period of time, it just kind of blended.
Yeah, and, and I think it will. I mean, we, we've had probably five complaints, so that, that's not too bad for as many lights that have been changed out, so.
Yeah, I used to tell Scott to turn the light down and he would just laugh it.
Street sweeping just finished up this week. They still had a little bit to do. Line striping, you guys approved, and we're waiting on a start date from that vendor. The public works crews are doing, redoing the crosswalks, repainting the crosswalks on Municipal and down Geo Carlson. After Sixteenth Avenue, Fifty James Buchanan, that gets new stormwater work at the two entrance drives to that business. So we'll be working on that next. And that's the quick and short of...
Since you mentioned the crosswalks, you're talking about on Geo Carlson, the crosswalks, is there a way to get either a fix? Is there a fixed sign on the side that says crosswalk? Because I've seen...
I don't know about every place, but some, absolutely.
Okay, or the one, I, I know the ones in the middle always get hit, but, you know, that sit on the little platform.
Yeah.
But I've seen a couple people like kind of hesitate to go out because people have just pulled out and they're not paying attention.
Like dodging.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can evaluate that. The first thing I'll do is find out which ones have signage now.
Are you, when you do the crosswalk, are you just doing the straight lines across or are you doing the hash marks?
We're doing the hash.
Okay, because they're not hashed now, are they?
Uh, some of them are.
I think the one at North Bailey where I see most of the people, I don't think that was hashed.
I'm not sure. I'll have to ask Huggins. I know most of the ones, at least around Municipal Drive and on Geo are hashed. There are the thick hash marks, but I'm not sure about that one, but we'll take a look at it.
Two lines, and that's where I've seen most people kind of like hesitate to dart.
You're talking down by Handy Crafters?
Uh, no, uh, right, right out here in front of the golf course.
Oh, okay.
At Bailey Road. Yeah, they're walking from like the Kmart Aldi area.
Yeah.
And then trying, because there you have to do, the trail is weird. It, you have to cross North Bailey and then you have to cross Geo Carlson to get back to the trail.
I'll, I'll have Huggins look at that.
Maybe it should be hashed. I know from when I used to run on there, that, that's a, that's a interesting, because you, you have to kind of frogger across the road to get back to the trail.
I have one tiny question. Do we have a timeframe on the UNO four precision dent on coming in on Manor Avenue?
Uh, I'll have to check. We, uh, most of the rough framing inspections and even some drywall inspections were done. They did make a couple changes mid-stream, but I do know they just did some, they did hook up to a public sewer, which was a little bit of an issue and a little bit of hiccup for them, but they did just get those permits and we just, actually they just finished the grinder pump and the hookup. So I'll, I'll shoot you an email. I have to double check and see, see where we're at.
Building looks great. I don't like the sign, but the building looks great.
And Ray, if you, if, if you picked up on this, Josh points out everything that he walks and drives, right? Mark is pointing out everything over on Lloyd and Manor because that's where he... You know where I drive?
Yes, sir.
I come down three forty and I make a right on Geo Carlson and there's this beautiful white sign right there for the county township. Needs a little paint.
Where, which one?
For the golf course.
Oh, right down here?
Yeah.
Does it really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the paint's kind of peeling. It looks kind of rough, and it's just something I, I noticed. So you get five different views from up here.
Oh, yeah, no, I get it. At Geo and Bonso, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, usually we have, yeah, we don't have any flowers over by the golf course, but actually I think it looks clean.
Okay.
You know, but, but yeah, normally there's flowers planted right outside our sign there.
I will have them spruce that up and look at the sign.
Yeah, just a coat of paint. I, I think we did it about two years ago. I remember asking...
I do remember a couple years ago.
Mike Fraggle took care of it, yeah.
Alright, yep, I'll look at it. Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Just the, the last thing, and, and I typically wouldn't do this, but again, there's a lot of people here. The, the, the things that Mr. Hashem said that were alluding to that I, you know, gave people information, you know, against his project is, you know, more than completely false. The only thing that, you know, I ever told, I had several people come in talking about that project that were interested in that property. The only thing that I ever alluded to was that tearing the building down would probably be met with resistance.
Yeah.
And the same thing, you pointed the perspective buyer to the historical commission.
Correct.
He met at county meeting house with them, and they were like, I love this! So Mr. Hashem, I don't, you know, I, I don't know where, where, I'm not going to say.
Yeah, there's always two sides.
Yeah, yeah, or...
Fine, Ray.
Yeah, one and one that's...
One more thing, Ray, I'm sorry. In front of the, the veterinary clinic on, across from Aldi and Lomax, Amtrak did a lot of work. They cut a lot of trees down.
Yep.
And they've got just poles laying there and wires hanging down. Do you know, are they finished or are they just, have they abandoned that?
I do not typically talk to Amtrak, but you're not suggesting that I send them...
I'm just asking if you know if they, they're completing.
I, my guess, Josh, my guess is yes, because they actually have large crews continuing to do a lot of work.
Okay.
Um, if I do get the opportunity and see any of them, I will ask, but I mean, every day they have large crews still working in county on the tracks. I'm not sure, that, like you said, they came through there, they did a lot, and I thought it looked, what they did was good, but then they just kept on moving. So my, my hope is that the crew that did the work doesn't do that cleanup and they'll send somebody afterwards.
Okay, because like the electrical box for that wiring is just laying on the ground.
Yeah, I know.
And, yeah, I, I'm, I'm probably also barred from, from talking to Amtrak, but...
Can we have a little applause for Ray and Huggins?
Oh.
I appreciate everything, but literally most of the stuff you talked about doing is definitely the, the public works crews and my staff, not me, so I appreciate it though.
Pass it along.
Oh, yeah, I had about five more questions.
Moving right along. Alright, we have EMS Chief Stewart. Andrew, Reminquous Fire Company. How are you this evening?
Andrew, could you call me an ambulance? I'm tired.
Which one would you like?
You're an ambulance.
Happy EMS week, for those that don't know. This is the National Declared DMF. We're coming to a close, but if you see any of the staff out there, please extend your gratitude to them. Last night, we had our annual Chester County Awards banquet. We had eight clinicians receive clinical save awards for cardiac arrest saves that actually walked out of the hospital with minimal and no deficits.
Alright, awesome.
On, on top of that, like I mentioned last month, we have six ambulances fully stocked, ready to go, four in service during the day, two to three on the overnight, depending on the, the night of the week. And then you guys have my, my report. His point. I'll keep it short and sweet.
Thank you.
Because I'm one of the few that stand between you and that door.
I know.
That report is that moment where you say, yeah, we need the right to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We're in a clapping mood today.
Yep, everybody's happy.
Alright. And last but not least, Ingleside Golf Course, Nicole.
Nicole!
Nicole! Now, now there's a round of applause right there. Been here over a month.
I love it.
Great job.
I liked your report. Looking good.
Yeah, April's was great. Up six percent revenue, eight percent in rounds. I think my report might have said a different number, but re, redid my math, double-checked, triple-checked, up eight percent in rounds, which is great. They're coming in droves and the weekends are packed and it's, it's fantastic. We've really tried to increase our social media presence, get more people in, especially during the week when we're a little slower. I've spent a lot of time interacting with golfers one-on-one because it's really the only way to find out how we can improve. We get reviews online, but that's not enough. We have a hundred and fifty golfers a day. And I try to talk to as many as I can, so I know what they're seeing. I don't get to play the course very often. Actually, I haven't played at all, and that's the best way to see the golf course. So they, the golfers know, know a lot about what they want to see. But it is getting hotter, and as it gets hotter, the grass demands more water, which is hard to provide at this moment where our irrigation system's running maybe fifty percent of it functions, which is unfortunate for the areas of the golf course that don't get water. So that's the, the bad. The good is a new fleet of golf carts is coming in a couple of months. I know this has been planned for years to get this done, and it's, it's a regular complaint from our patrons, so we're excited to do that. And it'll also bring in more revenue. We'll have more carts. We run out of carts each weekend. And we can't pack in the golf the way we want. So that'll be exciting. Other than that, May, May is already fantastic through, with a week left, including Memorial Day weekend, which will have a lot of golf. With a week left, we're already almost surpassed May twenty twenty-two. So May has been even better than April. And the staff, JT, the pro, everyone, phenomenal in supporting me. They deserve a round of applause as well. So, yeah, I just, I do have the one presentation proposal. I don't know if everyone has a copy of the quotes.
Yeah, I think we all received it, right?
If not, I brought more, but it is a proposal to begin upgrading the irrigation system. I have them too, so go, but go ahead, yeah. You have enough?
Here, you want that one back? They give it back to you at the end.
Well, Nicole, it looks like you're, you're ten K over, already May, ten K over last May. So this is half paid for already.
Yes, exactly. That's, that's a good way to look at it. So as you'll see with, with those quotes from a company that we regularly use for products, the infrastructure that's already in place for our irrigation system is also the same company, Poro. So everything's compatible and we can, we can, it's the only way we can do it in phases is if the new stuff still works with the old stuff. But this would be the first step in a phase to upgrade the whole system. We're going to start with the most important part, which would be the computer system. It's a central control system that we can autumn, we can run sprinklers on a timer essentially overnight. It's a no-brainer in my mind. It's an industry standard across golf courses. They, they don't spend hours and hours during the day trying to water greens and fairways by manually turning on sprinklers one at a time. It interferes with golf. It interferes with golf. It delays tee times, and it's an inconvenience. If we were able to water automatically overnight, we wouldn't spend time in the morning doing that. We'd be able to have earlier tee times, which means more tee times, which means more revenue. And that would be great.
I suspect lower water bills too, because you have it controlled.
The system will be very efficient. I will be able to control from a computer each individual sprinkler. I will know where we're the wettest, where we're the driest. I can present, percent adjust sprinklers, so we're not wasting anything. It's extremely efficient. We have, at, currently, we have no means to monitor what the irrigation system is doing. We don't know what heads function, what, what heads don't, without walking up to every two hundred and thirty-nine sprinklers currently on the golf course. And I would say eighty of them respond to the radio that we currently have. And one of the quotes is for a new radio. Radio, can't see the numbers anymore.
Yeah.
If you've memorized what a telephone number is, like, it's the only way you can know what you're pushing. The quotes, everything in this cost, which it's not added up on here, I, totally, but it's, I think it's twenty-two, three, four, four, yeah. Twenty-two, three, four, four, seventy. That includes the computer system, all the installation, onsite training, a map of the golf course and the irrigation system. It'll help us monitor it and know where we need to add in the future. And twenty-two brand-new sprinklers to replace ones that are entirely broken, that have been hit either by airifiers or mowers or, or anything like that. They have just been broken. So there's more than twenty-two broken, but for now, we'll, we'll go with twenty-two. And a new, and the FCC license, which is the frequency we use to do all the radio communications from sprinkler to controller to computer. It's technical, I suppose, but nine years, I believe, is the FCC license. It's not an annual fee. And then the warranties are, I think the heads are one year, the sprinklers are one-year warranties, the computer and stuff, that's all warranty for two years. And this company has a phenomenal support system, so they, they will be out to teach us how to use it. So this will avoid all the Band-Aids that have been going on for over a decade. This is an actual fix to a problem that hasn't been updated since two thousand and eleven. Is how old. The, the computer that was in there, two thousand and eleven.
If I'm reading this right, the total cost of twenty-four, four, two, nine point four oh is being met by removing some things from, that were budgeted for already, and it's actually a little less than that, am I correct?
Correct, correct.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so we had, we had budgeted for some capital improvements, including a, a new cart picker or ball picker for the driving range, some tree work and some bridge reconstruction. All of those things are resolved in-house or are unnecessary at this time. You know, the tree work, I, I will personally do all the tree work. So I don't want to pay, I don't need to pay anyone else to do it, but, yeah, the, the money is there. I just want to redirect it to something that is a long-term capital improvement. And it's very long-term. This is, this technology is upgradable as you go. That's all I've got.
Would it be feasible to get an extended warranty on some of these products or don't see if that's necessary?
I can ask more about any extended warranties on the computer. I can reach out to them. But I, I think that it's pretty standard. I think it's just what they, they offer.
My one question is the bridge repair. Is that something that you wanted to do in-house or...
I would love to.
Okay.
I would love to. So they're not, they're not as bad as, I don't know if they've been, you've been led to believe they're just destroyed, but they're not, they don't need like replaced right now. So this winter, this winter, me and... So this winter, this wi- winter, um me and Mr. Fraggle are gonna look at them, make sure all the footings and, and the, the main beams are good, um and we should be able to replace any of that ourselves.
Okay.
There's nothing special about them. They're not, they're not like suspension bridges, they're just, you know, it's, they're little tiny creeks uh that we can cross, so um, we will replace them and what we're gonna, when we work on that, we're also gonna keep in mind that there may be potential to expand cart paths, so we wanna keep in mind, we might move where the bridge is, we don't know yet. So that's something we're just gonna monitor this year, how to, uh how to direct traffic through the golf course.
Yeah, I believe in the golf course, I believe that, you know, with the right person running it and with the marketing, that it can it can be viewed in a much better light than a lot of people look at it. I love public courses. You've just told me how you would pay for this without spending a dime. And uh I'm impressed. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. No problem.
So this is my first time meeting you, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Yeah.
My apologies for that, but uh I will just say that, the um you're, you're a breath of fresh air and something that we desperately needed to, we finally turned the corner, I think, and now we can uh head in full steam in the right direction, so nice to meet you in person.
You as well.
And uh congratulations and keep doing the good work.
Can we do it again, since we've been doing it all night?
Oh, oh, we're. Alright, Nicole, thank you so much. Oh yes, Chris, come on up.
Yeah, we have to get the vote on it.
She wants to play.
Yeah.
Well, I did take lessons from the pro a few years back, so I will be going back out. Um Chris Parr, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue, um I was just curious, as, how long does it take to put up the whole sprinkler system, once you say yes, we're gonna go forth with that, how long does that take?
If we said yes to all of these proposals, um some of it would happen immediately, so the radio would shift. More accurate than water from a handhold. Uh the computer system, uh I haven't found out quite yet. Do they just stop something?
I'm just curious. Now what about the equipment itself, will you have someone to back you up if there's issues in the initial period, I know with, with what I've done in the past dealing with salespeople, you buy a huge amount of money, a worth of equipment, and then they're gone, so will there be someone to support you to, okay, good. Oh, that's good. That's great. And this is just cause I'm curious, when you were saying you have a hundred and fifty members? Or a hundred?
Uh we have just over a hundred.
Where are these patrons coming from, I'm just curious, are they coming from other counties or is it mostly from here in uh Chester County or Cown or? That's of Cown, okay, that's great. I get emails. That's great. Well, thank you, best of luck.
Who wants to play at that hoity-toity Downingtown Country Club anyway?
We do need a motion to.
So moved. Do we have a hand up?
Both in second, uh all in favor? Oh, there is a question in Zoom.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes, Mark?
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Mark.
Just wanted to say I had the great pleasure of beating Nicole on Monday night when we had the golf committee meeting. The first thing that struck me, she is definitely hands-on, um JT will describe that probably in better good, um description than I can, because she jumped right in there on first day and started doing mechanical things and stuff like that. Um, the second part is, her and JT, it seems, um came together as a team immediately. And, you know, JT's worked really hard, so it's really good to have Nicole there to help JT out, so she can do her job and JT can do his job, and that'll better the course and the patrons ongoing. So just great to have Nicole on board.
Alright, thank you, Mark.
We had a motion and a second?
Nicole, I, I do need to ask, cause Kristen had told me, but what's your dog's name, cause he is beautiful.
My dog's name is Jeter.
Jeter, Jeter, where, where do you come up with Jeter?
Derek Jeter.
Ah, there you go.
Baseball player.
I saw him many times live in his rookie year.
Jeter, Jeter is a thirteen-month-old German Shepherd.
Wow, that's it, thirteen months?
He's a baby.
Wow. Well, he's beautiful. And he does a great job with the ducks.
He eats the ducks.
Alright, so we, we have a motion and second and did we take a vote, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion's good, run with it.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, alright, uh any additional business? No, of course not, uh public comment? None? Alright, well, before I ask for a German, I hope everyone has a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend. Entertain a motion for a German?
So moved.
So move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.